It's like with any meeting, I'd like to welcome everybody for coming. A great way to show our patriotism and for America. First off, we always say our prayer first, and that one's to be fair and then try to come up with a pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we just praise and thank you for the day that you've given us. We ask you, Lord, to be with each one of us as we are participating in this special day with our candidates for city council. This is certainly a wonderful and important thing that we are allowed to do in this wonderful country of the USA. I just praise and thank the Lord for that every day of my life, and I hope you do the same. I ask you now to participate in this in your special way, and be blessed with the food that we will be eating in your name. Amen.
Can everyone please stand? I'd like to also acknowledge any members who have seen the crowd here. Thank you for your service, and thank you for keeping us with them. My pleasure is to apply. The United States of America, to the brotherhood of its fans, one nation under God, indivisible, the living being, the essence for all. Yes, as many of you know, this organization and all of the women's organizations support the For the Troops group out in City Valley. And we have a golf tournament coming up on June the first. And one of the cool things about the golf tournament is we have a ball drop. We have the helicopter come and drop about 2,500 balls into a little hole. And whoever wins that gets a visioner, two first-class tickets on Delta to Miami, four days stay at the Four Seasons in the suite, a limo open back to the gates, and a $1,000 piece certificate at the hotel. So I have the ball drop tickets with me. They're $10 apiece, three for 25, 13 for 100. If you would wish to buy some, please see myself for tomorrow. And thank you for your support. Our men and women who support us like getting the boxes, we get letters from them all the time. And they're very pleased about the letters they get from some of the people in this very room, along with the hundreds of schools in this valley that support the troops with their letters and with their signed toothbrushes. So thank you again. Also want to acknowledge Darrell, who's another member of the board, very active in our organization. Thank you for being here again, darling. And on to the show.
And Brian. This is Carrie Nelson. She's the president of the Caneo Valley Republican Women's Federation. My name is Maria Sanchez. I'm a co-founder and past president of the Westlake Village Republican Women's Federation and the first vice president presently. Our president is out of the country, so I'm here to welcome you and thank you for joining us in this group event. And to let you know that we have Mark Lund, who is the clerk recorder and registrar of our county as our program on Tuesday, April 28th at Sunset Hills Country Club. That's $25. And then we also have Rob Long, who is a superstar in Hollywood, producer, writer, creator. He's speaking to us Wednesday evening, May 20th, about the perils of being a Republican in Hollywood. So if you log onto our website at W B R W F dot org, you can get all the details. And then the very last Saturday in June, we are honoring Joni and Richard Young for their contributions to the party and to our club. So we welcome you at any one of those events. Thank you very much. Make sure you guys put it on your calendar, because it'll be a great event. Diane, it's time for you to come up.
This is the best part. It's my honor to serve as the chairwoman of the Sherpas at the Scholarship Committee this year. Thank you to our judges, Tricia Finn, Judy Johnson, and Ruth McGeadigan, for undertaking a difficult task of judging five worthy applicants. A Newbury Park senior, Henry Morata, will read his essay today. But first, a little Henry history, and also thank you to his mother and his grandmother for being with us today. How am I going to do this without crying? If you could have read the letters of endorsement from his teacher, she'd be crying too. Okay, Henry has 4.61 grade point average. He plays the drums in a jazz band, but he's captain of the marching band, president of the National Honor Society, president of peer counseling, student manager at the Westminster Free Clinic, and EMT trainee. And Amy also graduated. He volunteers at two churches, American Legion Boy State Delegate, and he represents the free clinic for the Board of Supervisors. Now, his English teacher wrote a letter of reclamation, and I can't read both, but maybe just forget it. But he was voted homecoming king. Yes, he is popular, but the students at Newbury Park High School love his ease on feet and confidence. He's not the student president, nor the captain of the football team, but the students love his openness yet principal strength. Now, there is two quotes that he gave to his English teacher. It's difficult for me to read them because they're small printed. Let's see. Everyone you will ever meet knows something you don't. And also, sometimes people are beautiful, not in looks, not in what they say, just in what they are. He is responsible, according to his director at the Westminster Free Clinic, they help 7,000 patients a year. Henry's responsible for helping to manage 40 high school interns that is on his clinic nights to make sure that the clinic runs smoothly, and he's a working team player for the staff. He is not afraid of being unpopular, and he has a great rapport with students and adults alike. He's reliable, flexible, and has provided over 300 volunteer hours at the clinic. Ladies and gentlemen, Henry Morata.
Thank you all so much for having me out here. It's been exciting to be here. Also, thank you very much to the judges. I know it's really tough, you reading that stuff. I have to read lots of applications for the clubs that I manage and stuff, and it's not just like high school kids, so it's like all the ladies are much better. Anyways, I'm super, super gracious for your guys to help and supporting me in this next chapter of my life. It's pretty freaky. My college, I still, I still got a little kid, like driving my car and stuff. I like, I drive. Yeah, it's weird stuff. Anyways, yes, thanks again so much. And to all of you for being here to support me as well. I wrote an essay for this that I was asked to read about what the Constitution means to me. And so anyways, I'm going to read that for you guys. I didn't write it as a speech, so it's written as an essay, so I apologize if it's just like sounding academically and not addressing, you know, global people or people. But anyways, here's my essay for y'all. To me, one of the most meaningful and powerful aspects of our nation's thunderous past is that it is a history written not only in blood, but also in ink. With seven articles and a total of 27 amendments so far, the United States Constitution is most definitely a distinctive aspect of our nation. However, to me, the Constitution is more than a framework for our government, followed by an outline of our inalienable rights. It is something that defines my place as a citizen of this country, giving me a sense of both meaning and purpose in a nation that has been sculpted by so many astounding individuals. The Constitution begins by outlining the legislative power of our government, the Senate and House of Representatives. I believe that this provision of a rigid foundation for this branch of our government is crucial to our nation's ability to adapt and develop. What I find both fascinating and inspiring is that our nation, our Constitution was crafted with the thought in mind that our nation would always be changing, adapting to new socio-economic, political, and geographical situations as time passed on, and somehow others of the Constitution were still able to create such a system that would last into my own lifetime. The most meaningful aspect of this to me is that despite the Constitution's capability of always changing by incorporating new additions within the amendments, it still has the foundation that always holds true to how the architects of our nation wanted it to be. In my own life, I tried to incorporate these principles, always holding true to myself while still making sure I keep an open mind to change, ensure the Constitution is not merely a document that influences how our country runs, but also one that directly influences me as an individual, affecting how I run my life, goals, and dreams. Along with this idea, the Constitution outlines what Congress can and cannot do, supplementing the enumerated rights of their power with the necessary proper laws. With this clause, one that has been received, that one that has received much controversial attention to this day, brings up an important question to me. Is it the government's job to protect the citizens of the US through making the laws that disprove it, or should it be up to people to say, to say, sorry, to distinguish what is in their favor? In fact, it is the very, it is this very clause that has developed my budding interest in politics over the past few years. As I grow, attempting over and over to rationalize my more dishonest opinion on this matter, I've come closer in contact with an insatiable drive which will relate to current events that swirl back to the roots of our Constitution's past. Thus, the Constitution has allowed me to discover an amazing idea. My opinion on the events happening in my life right now, whether they be controversial court decisions or local political petitions, can be developed in academic and policy if I look to the roots of the law and the Constitution. What I find even more inspiring is that any individual can look to the Constitution and interpret it in his or her own way, developing their own unique ideas off the same information as the nation. Now, to some, this may sound counterproductive, but what I have realized is that this idea that everyone is entitled to their own thinking is a fact that defines our nation as a whole. In fact, it is this very arguing of opinions on debated matters, both past and present, that how our nation develops as a whole, never becoming dogmatically stagnant or stationary. Even to this day, citizens are bold on their opinion of presidents dating back to the 19th century in order to diagnose trends in the social interpretation of our own history. Though much of the Constitution speaks of the framework rights and positions of our federal and state governments, another valuable aspect of it is its description of the rights of the people. What I find mean is that the Constitution holds the rights of its people in no different light than that of the federal government. More often than not, the governments of other nations are always on top, having a negligible amount of influence from the people it governs. Contrastingly, the Constitution gives the people of the United States a sense of safety through secure protection of our inalienable rights, both the citizens and as human beings. To me, one of the most significant aspects of this is that our rights as US citizens are not tied to any part of the framework of our government. This shows me not only how important individuality is in our nation, but also how important it is that our nation was founded by people who broke away from another government. To me, I find that great sense of not only pride, but also responsibility in that our nation lies ultimately in the hands of the people. This aspect of the Constitution pushes me to always educate myself on political matters so that when it comes time for me to contribute to our country, I'm able to do so with an educated mind. To close, after analyzing what the US Constitution means to me, it has become clear that my standing as an individual in this nation is indeed given meaning by the hand and purpose by this amazing document. Along with this, the Constitution has shown itself to me as something that inspires me to be politically active and always seeking to contribute to my country, whether locally or nationally. But most importantly, the Constitution gives me a sense of appreciation for how the country around me is held together, how something as simple as a single set of documents provides so much complexity to the fabric of our unique, influential, and inspirational moment of the United States of America. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, guys. It's an honor to be here.
Thanks for being a wonderful, wonderful time. I am here, please know that there are actors and great kids out there. Okay, I'd like to honor some of our past presidents. Trudy, please, sir. Are you here, Trudy? Want to stand? Stephanie Ferguson, Tamara. Carrie Nelson. Martha Swanson, hopefully she's here. Judy Young, the past president, Gina Dell, Carol Hurt, myself, and welcome. I'm sorry. You know, I did. This is annoying, I'm sorry. Our successes come from building relationships with donors and volunteers, the county party, the state party, the Republican National Committee, consultants, and state staff. We are here to help each other so that our club, our party, and our nation can have the best leaders. From our, we have a brochure, a membership brochure, and we, I think I want to just cut to the chase so I don't keep crying. Couple of our, well, our best, one of the highlights through these 23 years, 2009, the state party gave us a trophy for being the best wrestling club in the entire state. In the state, between the Republican women, the law cabinet Republicans, and other organizations within the party structure. So that was quite an honor. And we had fundraisers that included civil war battles. We had our reenactment over in Fillmore before the Reagan Library. I love being number one. Tents tournaments, card parties, we had a midnight golf tournament with gold balls and gold hard balls. We've had garage sales, lots of fun things, but we also support the troops, we support our scholarships, our books to schools in the area. And then we have individual members that have been honored for their volunteer hours by the California Republican Party, the California Federation of Republican Women, the National California, excuse me, the California Republican, where am I going? The National Republican National Committee, and even been invited to the White House. Happy birthday, Amy Bell. Well, that doesn't help. Okay, so we're going to break for lunch, and since this is a really tight room, I'm thinking, how should we do this? So we do maybe just these tables as we go, so maybe on the out, free for all? Okay, free for all. Anyway, the food's ready to go. I know, I'll do that in a second, but just letting you know, so that we can kind of try to run this a little bit better on time, because we kind of ran a little late getting started with the table situation. So food's ready, I guess hurry and get it now. Just anybody, just go ahead, I guess free for all. First off, this is our loving stone candidate's room, and we kind of asked these tables back here if you could kind of refrain talking because the sound comes up. This is being filmed, so we can kind of keep it down to, you know, good for here and there. So that won't be a big bad. Make sure everybody turns your sound phone, their cell phones down, sorry, ours is going to be single. Right. Okay. And now that Tamara's now reminding me again, but Bob, we want to thank you for coming and filming.
It's a pleasure.
So as the luncheon's wrapping up, I'm going to give you the rules. We've got three great candidates here, and the Republicans that are running for city council. And with luck, one of each candidate before you will be our next city representative.
Yes, good.
So here are the rules. Candidates are going to begin 12 minutes to give their speech. There will be no question and answer period. If you have any questions, you can stay after and speak with the candidates directly. Each candidate will introduce themselves, and we have a timekeeper here, and she will give you guys the signal when it's a minute before it wraps up. So our first candidate is Mr. Roundtree.
Give him a big round. First of all, I want to thank everyone in the club for putting this on. I know we're going to go through, I think it's five forums, more than the presidential For those of you who I have not met, I'm Dan Roundtree, and I'm from Temple City, California, near Pasadena, home of the Rams. The son of an L.A. PD officer, my mom was a secretary. My parents taught me at a very young age to figure out, Dan, or they would say, Dan, how are you going to contribute to country? How are you going to contribute to community? They led by example. They were a part of the community, like many of you. So it was very easy for me to fall into that path. A product of public schools, I graduated from UCLA in 1982 with a degree in sociology. We have brooms in the room. At UCLA, I ran what was called the UCLA Government Internship Program, and my job there was to place UCLA interns in congressional and senatorial offices in Washington, DC. In 1982, I worked for Barry Goldwater Jr. in Washington, DC. So you can say I've had some good Republican training. I learned from Barry the realities of government firsthand, and it was this experience that led me to this path. It was also at that time where I caught what we call the Potomac fever, where the national news is the local news, and the local news is the national news. As a young Republican during Reagan years, I learned that government starts with cities and communities. But at that point, I had to make a choice, and the choice I made was family first. I do have to cry. I married my best friend, Lori. Love you. Boy is a graduate of Tufts University, and especially the hand rehabilitation. She's the owner of Hand Rehabilitation Specialist at Thousand Oaks with her and her partner Heidi. The clinic started here at Thousand Oaks in 1977. Lori and Heidi have owned it for 13 years, and she and Heidi is a boy of 18 people here locally. My son Brandon and Kendall are products of Caneo schools, actually born at Los Robles Hospital, and they both graduated from Westlake just a few years ago. My son Brandon graduated from Cal Lutheran and now lives in Atlanta. My daughter Kendall graduated from Loyola Marymount and is now pursuing her master's degree in business from Pepperdine University. When the kids were growing up, I began to take leadership roles in virtually everything, soccer dad, baseball dad, and as you all know, because you've all heard on many boards, one group led to another, which then led to another, which then led to another. I'm the former commissioner of Westlake Pony Baseball, chairman of the Friends of Scouting Program, Boy Scouts in America, Ventura County Chapter, president of Westlake High School Soccer Booster Club, and chairperson for the Caneo Validities Parade, Carnival, and a number of other items. But as empty nesters now, I have more time to communicate and participate in the next phase of my life, which is community service. In city government today, it's nice to have prior experience as a volunteer, but it takes current formal classroom training and experience to serve as a council member. As former chair and current member of the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission, I've attended over 30 classes of city governance. Thirty through one of the most respected organizations in the state, the League of California Cities. Classes ranging from city budgets, land use, zoning, public works, policing, fire, water resources, there's a topic for you, wastewater management, environmental practices, air quality, resources, just to name a few. But in addition to classroom work, I have ruled and voted on over 74 individual projects in the city of Thousand Oaks in the last two years. Those cases cover topics such as new business applications, projects, housing elements, city safety elements, hillside protection, open space acquisition strategies, there's one for you, sell side applications, remodels, zoning, signage, and my favorite, solar installations. I would expect the residents of Thousand Oaks and all of you in this room, you'd want your council members to have a background, current training, and academic credentials to help make the tough decisions. New ideas, good intentions, and name recognition are, do not qualify someone to run our city. All current council members, all current council members served on the planning commission. The current hands-on experience of the planning commission gives me the ability to work with the current council and helping to solve the challenges of today. And many of these cases, probably half of them that we work on the planning commission, get kicked up to the city council. So I'm very familiar with each of the cases. But if I were sitting in the audience, I'd say, why Dan Roundtree? And why now? You may not recognize this, but the city is in a crossroad right now. And if you started to see it in the paper, you're going to see more. Andy Fox at the recent State of the City address said, the city needs to do a better job in financial planning. He said it two separate times. I couldn't agree with him more. But the current council has no one who has any academic credentials in financial planning. So wouldn't it be a good idea to have someone participate in that capacity? That's what I hope to bring to the table. As a certified financial planner with 32 years' experience with the same firm, I am that person. I'm the person with the training, 32 years of private sector experience, and the passion to help lead this city. This is not a popularity contest. I'm going to give you an example. I want you all to pretend you're human resource managers. That's your new title. If you look at the city of Thousand Oaks, it has assets, fixed assets, of about $1.2 billion. So if you look at it as a company, it's worth about $1.2 billion between the pipes, the sewer systems, the trucks, and the land, $1.2 billion. Annual revenues of about $80 million in general fund. If you put it all together, about $125 million of annual revenue. If you were human resources managers, wouldn't you want someone that had the training, experience, academic credentials to make those tough decisions? You'd say, of course. Of course you would. As a council member, I'm going to focus on five things. There's a lot more to talk about, but I have 12 minutes. So I'm going to prioritize them as my top five, or Dan's top five. First of all, open space preservation. We have 16,000 acres of open space. In fact, did you know that 97% of Ventura County is either agriculture or open space? Here at Thousand Oaks, 16,000 acres, I'm going to defend everything I possibly can to do that. Open space acquisition strategies, that class we took, there is a science to this. This all did not happen by accident. And over the last 50 years, our founding leaders and the men and women that followed them did a fantastic job. Why? They made it a priority. I too will make this a priority. Public safety, being the son of a police officer, that will always be top of mind. It's part of my DNA. When you look at cities around the state, you've all heard, Thousand Oaks, year in and year out, is one of the number one, if not number one, each and every year for cities over 100,000 population. That's also not an accident. That's because there's priorities, priority of public safety, and we can't forget our fire safety. We had an awful fire just a few years ago. No loss of life, no loss of property. Why? Rigorous hillside, redevelopment, and a number of other very well-aired firefighters. The firefighters need to continue to be funded, and I will do everything I can to help them. Prudent financial management is point number three. This is right in my wheelhouse. We will not spend more money than we bring in. But I'll also tell you, the city of Thousand Oaks and the staff have done a fantastic job, fantastic job balancing a budget in the most recent recession. They made a very unpopular decision, along with staff, to eliminate They made a very unpopular decision, along with staff, to eliminate 107 jobs. Very, very difficult to do, but they did what they needed to do to stay within the budget. Number four, senior citizens. The city of Thousand Oaks and the private sector, I think, have done a good job. They created many programs for seniors: the Council on Aging, Senior Area Master Plan, Senior Concerns, the recently renamed Adult Center. But with the aging of Americans, roughly 12,000 people are turning 65 each and every day. Demographics show our city is older than the average city. What are we going to do when all of us, and I'm 55, what are we going to do 20 years from now? Well, I can tell you right now what's happening, is there aren't enough options for seniors. So what they're doing, they're moving to Camarilla, they're moving to Sealy Valley, they're moving to Morford. Why? Those cities have taken the challenge that we're going to provide more options for our seniors. And in this most recent 2064 Visioning Project, at the very end, the staff put together a list of the top 10 things that they all participated with over the past six months. And of that top 10, there wasn't one mentioned to be a senior. How could we do that? How could we do that to the people who built this city? So if you're not 75, 80, and so forth, what about you at your 55 going forward? There is a freight train coming down the track, and we have to adjust. We have no choice. But right now, there isn't enough for seniors. Last but not least, what the paper has quoted me by saying is the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and that's the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. It is the law. It has been passed by city council. But if you've ever had an investment prospectus, which is about this thick, right Frank, about this thick? How many of those investments actually turned out the way they were supposed to? We're now like implementation things, but what I'm trying to do is to get citizens to participate, to participate in what it looks like, not just allow our developers to build it as the way it's going to be. As parents, we take a great deal of time to teach our kids, hit good grades, study hard, and yes, honey, make good decisions. The best decision you can make for yourself and the city is on June 2nd, is to elect Dan Roundtree, your next city council member.
Well, I appreciate the entree about talking about senior citizens. It's a good introduction. I'm Ed Jones. I'm currently chair of the Caneo Recreation Park Board and also a member of COSCA, which is the group that is preserving our thousands of acres of open space. And I might say, as an early councilman, I helped to get that started. The early developers were irate, and we were demanding that they donate about 25% of their land or parks, schools, and open space. They had never experienced that before. But when I hadn't imposed it, and that's why we have so much open space today. So I served on the council, and I also was on the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. And I'd like to comment on Evelyn's opening prayer, in which she reminded us about the importance of studying our government. I've been trying to get students to do that for, I think, 50 years, and I really appreciate that admonition. And I must say, I was tremendously favorably impressed with Henry Verota's essay. In all my years of teaching, I teach community college. I don't think I've heard a better one, so... Yeah, is he still here? Okay, well, it should be a private compliment. Man, you know Diane keeps starting to cry. When do we hear me speak? Reminds me, I'm a PK. When I met Rob the other day, I told him my father was a presidential minister. I've got to say one preacher's joke, Rob. This was about this student that was last year in seminary, and he wanted to make a tremendous impression in his first sermon, on his first higher edition. So he studied this sermon, and he was going to talk about Christ, passion, and prophecy. He called it "The Real Meaning of Suffering," and he worked on it, and he worked on it. Finally, he gave it to his first church, first sermon, and he was speaking, when he was shaking hands at the door at the end of the service. A man came up to him and said, "You know, I really never knew the real meaning of suffering, though I listened to you speak." Well, so you might have to suffer through this. You know, this is like old poems to me. I've been a member of Republican Women, I guess, I've never been a student between the two clubs. If anybody around here remembers Mary Tate or Dale Hendrickson. They always got me in, whatever that club was. And then resist Rosemary Todd, and she even cornered me at a bank one day, and I was at a counter writing out checks. She says, "Ed, as long as you've got your checkbook out." But they always let me speak at Lincoln's birthday, and I always enjoyed doing that. When I was about eight or nine years old, I asked my father why we were Republicans. My father, who came here at age 15, he was a Welshman, or 17, excuse me, but very little, worked his way through college and seminary. And he, his first one in his family that went to high school, he obtained two doctor's degrees. He was a valedictator at Occidental. He said to me, "I'm a Republican because the Republican Party believes in self-reliance." I remember his exact words. He said, "Show me a person who sets the moral of the living, and I'll show you a person who is wrong." So I was active as a young man in the Republican Party. I'll go a little faster here. When I got out of the Army, I went back to Occidental and in time for the Eisenhower second time that he ran for president against Adlai Stevenson. And because I worked so hard at Occidental, I'm sure that's the major reason that Mr. Eisenhower was elected. I shook hands with Richard Nixon, became a thorn-hog. Have you ever been a thorn-hog at Occidental? Okay, Occidental, we're tight, as you talk about rooms, we're tight. I must say that I have five points I'd like to make. That's two more than a Presbyterian sermon. See, Presbyterian sermons always have three points, so you don't have to hear the second point, that, you know, it's not going to last too much longer. First thing, I believe, and is fiscal purpos. This is my 21st year in office. I handle public money as if it were my own money. I don't spend it if I don't have to. On the park board, we don't all go to the conferences and conventions. We send a couple of people, so the taxpayers don't have to pay for a lot of airfare and hotel rooms, and then they report back. We've had two already this spring, and I have not attended, because Joe Gibson and the other board members, excuse me, when they come back, you bring reports, and so we save money that way. That's what I want to do. I honor the taxpayers' dollars. Every person works very hard for this money. It's a sacrifice to pay that money. They need to know it's going for a proven purpose. That's my first point, proven fiscal planning. Second is responsiveness. I have always prided myself on answering phone calls, emails. If anybody has a problem, whatever it is, I was a while ago yesterday, and I had a woman that was having a tree problem. And I said, "You know, we're having a park coordinator tonight." She came, and I referred her problems to Tom here, I don't know if you've known him, he's the head of our Parks and Planning Department, and we're going to solve that problem. I noticed the years, I was out of office for about 20 years. Sometimes I'd phone elected person, I'd never get a call back. So I pride myself on being an ombudsman. I try to channel whatever the problem is, whatever the situation is, and get that problem solved for at least the reason why you had to do it. So that's my second mark, responsiveness. My third point is also one of Dan's points, and that is, we've got to keep behind our fire and police departments. They're the public safety people. I always voted, all the time I was on Board of Supervisors, I always voted for the sheriff's budget, because that is what keeps us safe. That's why we're one of the safest counties. Often on, Thousand Oaks has always voted the safest city, and I think that's the reason. And I also helped get two fire stations open, one in Westlake and one in Old Park. So I'm firmly behind the support of our safety services. Also, senior concerns. I'm very active with senior matters. I led us on from the Caneo Labor Park District, excuse me, to the Golden Center, and I attend meetings regularly there. And we're working on what is called the SAM, Senior Development Program, and we're doing everything we can. I'm, one of the things, if I'm elected to the city council, I am going to work very hard to build a senior center in cooperation with CRPD and Newbury Park. I think we need it. I met a woman with tears in her eyes one day, when I was walking over by Newbury Park, and she said, "I just can't get over to Golden Center. It's just too much for a trip." We're going to do something to solve that problem. I really kind of think that's a high priority item. And finally, let me say that I'm in the environmental wing of the Republican Party, and I don't know how populated that one is. I'm not trying to save the planet, but I'd like to save Thousand Oaks, including our oak trees. I have a little concern about the idea of putting hundreds of dwelling units on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Thousand Oaks Boulevard was not designed for that. And I'm not predisposed to do it. I've looked at all the evidence that I've elected and made that decision, but I, as far as schools, utilities, transportation, Thousand Oaks Boulevard has the highest traffic level of any east-west quarter of Thousand Oaks. City council, the general plan was, if you ever come back from LA and gotten off to Hampshire, Hampshire was supposed to go through the Hillcrafts, and put that traffic on Hillcrafts. The city council at that time decided not to do that, okay? So all that goes on to Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Thousand Oaks Boulevard is by far the most heavily trafficked east-west highway. Plus, the shops on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, did you ever drive down Thousand Oaks Boulevard and analyze? It's like gasoline handling. It's huge popular. It's tire shops, it's repair shops, it's automotive shops, it's wheel aligner shops. For people that want to stroll there, other than the Civic Arts Plaza, you know, it's not conducive to that. Nothing like State Street in Santa Barbara, where you have boutiques, and dress shops, and gift shops, and a museum, and the beach, you know, all those things. So I'm, you know, I'm really going to have to scrutinize that perfectly thoroughly, but I'm not excited. And what about children? What if they're creating, you know, two- and three-bedroom dwelling units? Where are those children going to go to school? Where are they going to play? They're not going to play on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And finally, I've got to mention oak trees. This may sing Monday into a lot of people, okay? I went on to city council in 1970. In 1970, we passed the Oak Tree Ordinance. This was an oak forest at one. And you know what the title of the ordinance is? The Oak Tree Preservation and Protection Ordinance. I went to both the Planning Commission meeting, the council meeting, all they were talking about was cutting down oak trees. I didn't hear anything about preserving and protecting oak trees. I want to go back to the Oak Tree Ordinance, the way it was before 2010. Before 2010, you could take down an oak tree for a proven purpose, but you hadn't justified. What came out of the Planning Commission, or what the city council was pondering, is any homeowner could take down any three oak trees at any time without a justification. But what I, which I don't think is right. You know, they thought that they could feel glass steel, that the bankers were on the old man. I mean, what happened? We needed those safety requirements. We needed standards, okay? We need standards for oak trees, in my opinion. And I would just say that it is the Conservatory Oak Tree Preservation and Protection Ordinance. Let's go back to the early standards, before you hadn't justified cutting down an oak tree, and also lower the prices for permits so people can afford it. I see that I'm being flagged down. Let me just say in conclusion, very non-patriotic. The other side by the heaven and everything, I felt part predisposed to talk about federal matters and patriotism, which is another strong point of the Republican Party. But thank you for letting me talk about oak trees.
I have my own timer right here, so I'm sure. My name is Rob McCoy, and I'm running for city council. I'd be honored to have you vote. I was thinking about the two Republicans that I'm running against in regards to Ed Jones and Dan, and I had the privilege to meet Ed at my doorstep, because he's a prolific pre-Saint Walker. And he came to the door, and he said, "I'm Ed Jones, I'm running for city council." I said, "It's Rob, of course." I wondered what I'm going to be too. Did he come to be vote for us? No, I didn't.
You're undecided.
I'm sorry?
You're undecided.
No, I'm not. But I wanted to introduce Ed to my wife, and all of your years of service, so grateful for, as a matter of fact, Calvary Chapel, the church I'm a pastor of, it was Ed who was a supervisor, for the first time in church county history, zoned it so that a church could be an industrial site, so thank you for that. But I introduced him to my wife just now, and he said, "Your wife or your daughter?" And I thought, "You've been doing this a long time." Dan, thank you for your service. I was listening to your resume, and it's extensive and prolific. Jackie Erwin appointed you. She's a tough competitor, I know you will be as well, and I look forward to the race. So with that, I want to go in to share with you a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Coronado, California. My mother was a president of Republican Women, grew up walking precincts, and we have a long history of service in our family. My father was a Navy captain, pre-tours of Vietnam. Having been raised in Coronado, I was around the likes of Admiral James Stockdale, Captain James Stark, both were prisoners of war in the Hanoi Hilton. They were very close members of, or friends of our family, and I grew up with them. And so I have a real heart for patriotism. And with that, having walked precincts as a young child, the privilege of being Ronald Reagan, a number of other dignitaries as well, with my mother being so actively involved in Californian politics. I'm a second-generation Californian. My father was born here, so was I, and it was instilled in me at a young age to serve people. My mother would take us to the rest homes to visit the folks there every Sunday. We weren't churchgoers, but we would visit the rest homes. I'd tell her, "Mom, I don't want to go." "Hey, you're going to go." And it was a non-negotiable. So we grew up in a family that was committed to service in our community. As my father served in the military, I was called into the ministry. But that took a while. When I got a scholarship, we were swimming in water polo, and it's hard to believe I was a water polo player, I look more like a boogie now, but I got a scholarship to Fresno State, that's the heart of the San Joaquin Valley. It's not quite UCLA, but we did beat you in water polo. I graduated with a history degree from Fresno State, and then went into sales. I worked for Helene Curtis, and then Chief Rowpons, and then the largest consumer product company, Unilever, as a divisional manager. And then I went to work for AC Nielsen, which they do project as A&amp;A. And during that time, as Michelle and I, we were married in 1990, it'll be 25 years this month, April 21st, we have five children. My three oldest, my girls, my two youngest, my boys, and I've got Michael here with me. Michael's about eight months away from Eagle Scout. Thank you for working with the Boy Scouts. And Daniel's already chief of the Eagle Scouts, and we love the Boy Scouts. Thank you. But when Michelle and I married, and I was working for AC Nielsen, we had a call to the ministry, and we moved to Fresno. Now, mine, I was born and raised in Coronado, which is one of the crown jewels of California. It's beautiful. And I moved to Fresno. Playing my jokes, but I'm not going to say them. When we moved to Fresno, it was an interesting time to be there. Fresno had rapid development. They were going to redevelop the Fulton Mall, and it was going to be the crown jewel of California, and that would draw people to Fresno, make it a resplendent city. Well, the developers redeveloped the Fulton Mall, it became an eyesore, and everyone moved north, and the Fulton Mall became the epicenter of poverty and crime. And people just kept moving north, and developers kept developing, and the city became a mess. By the mid-'90s, when Michelle and I went there, we had the second highest murder rate in any city in the U.S. The second highest car theft rate. My wife and I began ministry, we're in the equivalent of Section Eight housing, as I was a poor seminary student at the time, with two children. And we had a car stolen from our driveway. The roof was held up against point mark back fence. We remember one night watching on the news a raid on a parking complex with drug dealers. We turned off the TV, opened our blinds, and watched it live across the street.[1303.12][1303.12](Laughter) True story, she can testify. What ended up happening is the public and the private sector came together and they wanted to save their city. And we had Pete Meehaus, the superintendent of schools, Jim Patterson, the mayor. We had Steve McGarry, who was the sheriff, Ed Elwood, chief of police. I was a flying of walls, a young seminary student, asked to be a part of it. And I saw a man by the name of Glenn Edmund stand up and commit to any nonprofit organization that was willing to paint houses in the Lowell District near the Fulton Mall, which was the epicenter of poverty. And they were all owned by slum lords, and he would donate to paint for free. Now, the slum lords loved it, the tenants loved it even more. I took him up on that. Our group, youth group that I was working with in Norbean Church, we painted fourteen of those houses. As the community came together in a myriad of ways, the city had the highest crime rate drop in FBI statistic histories for a city of size. By ninety-seven, it became America's finest city. That had a huge impact on me. Because I grew up in Coronado, which is resplendent. There haven't been any major developments, so there isn't a huge increase in funds that will come from any major developments other than the Coronado shores that were built years ago. It's much like Thousand Oaks is. Those incentives completed, there aren't any more major developments to happen. We have to live within our means, revenues are decreasing, costs are increasing. And Coronado had to put that together. But when it was given over to developers and watching what happened in Fresno, it's good to make money, but not at the expense of the things we love. And so when I look at Thousand Oaks, this is my home. You see, in 2001, Michelle and I were living in San Jose, California. And I was assistant pastor of a large church, I was asked to come to candidate for pastor of a small church on Skyland, about fifty people. We came here in January, it was pouring rain. It was like an elf was sitting on, put in our car with the garden hose.[1415.62][1415.62](Laughter) We couldn't see a thing, and it rained that way the entire weekend. We taught the church, greeted all the folks, drove back to San Jose, still pouring rain. We actually stayed the weekend at Malibu their friend's house. So I didn't even see the area, I thought it was Los Angeles, I didn't know. Got to San Jose, they called, they said, "We want you to be the pastor." We packed up the car, we headed out in March. By the time we arrived, the rain had dissipated and the skies were clear and the sun was out, and the hills were verve green. Flowers were blooming, it was one of the most prettiest places I've ever seen in all of them. My wife and I turned to each other, my son Michael was born here, and this has been the only home he's ever known. And like your son, two was born in those robes, although the doctor didn't make it in time, my wife takes a quick delivery.[1456.83][1456.83](Laughter) But the two of us are going to grow old, we have our first grandson. I'm planning on getting married to the Camarillo Park down there, not anytime soon.[1469.62][1469.62](Laughter) And I know Dan alluded to this idea of popularity contest. I don't see it that way either. When I heard Henry speak, I was thinking the idea of the Declaration of Independence, "We hold these truths and be self-evident, and all men are created equal, endowed by the creed of certain inalienable rights." Those rights don't come from men, they come from God. And they're inalienable, they're intrinsic. Government's role is not to give us our rights, it's to take our rights. The Constitution for which Henry was alluding to, when it says, "We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union." It goes on to say that we establish justice and ensure domestic tranquility, but the part that gets me is, "And secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity." I understand Dan alluded to the fact that every council member has been a commissioner, planning commissioner. Well, if that's the case, then why have elections? Let's just appoint them from here on out. Let's let the people who are in charge appoint the next ones in charge, but we live in a representative form of government. And it's not a popularity rating. The idea is, every one of those votes, the twenty-one thousand that I received in the last election, and fifteen hundred more than Jackie in the old city when she was a city councilwoman. Those were harder votes from people who I shared that vision with, believed it. I'm here to represent the people of this community. I'm not owned by any special interests. I have fresh ideas and insights. It's our community services that entail. I've been overseeing an organization for fourteen years that's contributed over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand hours of community service. Been a sheriff's chapel, Ventura County Sheriff's Department, been on two boards in this community. The idea is, I'm a citizen just like you, and I listen. That's what my life has been about. I listen to people, and I do my best to make good things happen for you. That's what I've been instilled as a child, to serve a community, to serve people. We've done that my whole life. And I long for the privilege to serve you, the citizens of this community. I'm here to serve you. And thank you for the two men that are running, having had the chance to get to know Jay Roshi. But I'll tell you what, as far as these two men are concerned, if one of them wins, we're still going to be okay. They're good men. But I still want to represent you, and I look forward to that opportunity. God bless you all, thank you.[1616.33][1616.33](Applause)
Well, I think we're pressed with all three candidates right now in representation. Barbara, do we have a number?
(Inaudible)
Okay, get that going. Maria, the date here for the Rob Long is Wednesday, May twentieth. I want to make sure I have that on there. And everybody write that down, because I think that sounds like a really great event to go to. And then also Tuesday at Sunset Hills Country Club, April twenty eighth, is it right? About eleven o'clock? Okay.
Make sure it is an evening.
It is an evening event? Okay, great. So that's at the Wesley, um, Decedrated website. W-W-W-W-F-R. Whatever.
G-R.
Yeah, yes. That is great. So while Barbara's counting, um, we're just going to do our fifty-fifty.
(Inaudible)
Yes, we'll have us time to do three candidates with Dan here. Our next meeting is going to be here on Saturday, May sixteenth. We're going to be having a breakfast meeting. We don't have our speaker secured at this moment, but it's going to be between two different people, so we'll let you go on down on our news letter. Barbara?
I have.
Okay.
I have, I have.
If anybody wants to get your tickets out.
(Inaudible) Okay, just to let you know, I have my name, not a key, three dollars. So someone is going to do lucky binarity.
One, nine, two, three, four, six.
Oh!
Okay, I have to confess, I do have that number, but I will give the number out to somebody else, because that's not fair.
One, nine, two, three, five, five. Three, five, five.
Okay, I thank you all for coming and spending time and getting a chance to hear our candidates. God bless and have a great day.